You guys like the new cover? Okay, I find mine, so I can use mine. I have to keep. But anyway, welcome to West Covina City Council Meeting. And today is December 2nd, 2025. Right now it's 7:02 and meeting in section. And tonight, I'm not going to read this. Everybody want to address the council. You will come to address, please, okay? And invocation tonight will be led by the pastor Kelly Dupay. And the mayor Protem Leti Lopez Viado will lead us in a pleasure of leisure. All right, please.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight and we humbly ask for your assistance and your guidance. We need your help, Lord. We need the leadership of your Holy Spirit in our city. And we thank you, God, for what you are doing and the privilege of living in this or working in this great city. Lord, tonight we are here to honor and to lift up as Leti Lopez Viado is sworn in to be mayor. Lord, we pray that you would bless her, that you would anoint her with your Holy Spirit, that you would give her wisdom and strength and guide her, Lord, as she leads our city and fulfills the duties upon which she is about to enter into. So thank you, Lord, for your presence here tonight. We pray your blessing on the decisions that will be made by the city council. And Lord, we thank you for blessing the city of West Covina. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Please remove your hat, face the flag, put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Assistant City Clerk, roll call, please.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Roll call, Councilman Contos.
Here.
Councilwoman Diaz.
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Mayor Protem Lopez Viado.
Present.
Mayor Wu.
Here.
Thank you.
And we don't have a closed session, so we have nothing to report out, right? City Attorney? Okay, very good. Now we're going to the presentation.
We have three presentation with three outstanding lady of West Covina. We call it Miss West Covina. Okay, the first one I want to invite come to the podium, they is they all contribute so much for our city. They like anchor of the city. They they basically contribute so much. And that's why we want to invite them and recognize them. The first one, you got ready? Gail Mason, would you please come up? No, no worry, take your time. I don't want you, okay, fall and sue the city, okay? Okay, this won't be a happy ending. Okay, so very important thing is this girl, okay, has been serving his community service forever, okay? And like, I don't know how long, 20, 30 years already? 20 or longer than my serving in city? But most important thing is this is always outstanding, try to contribute to our city, improve our city for community service, and give a lot of suggestion. And that's how our city today is so vibrant and united together. You want to say something?
Sure. You know, I said 20, but it might be 15. They go so fast because when you work for a city, time flies. And I've loved every minute of it. I've been on a couple of the of the seats, but I love community and senior services. I think that's it's so vibrant and so important. That's right next to our kids. And the one thing that I love about Tony is he loves kids. And he has done a whole lot for the children of West Covina. And I just want to say, I think it was it was my honor to serve here.
I think it's all our honor, okay, or our pride, okay, and to serve the great city of West Covina, okay? And that's so with you, you always kind of say, Tony, we have to do this, we have to do that, okay? Okay, and always say what we can do to make sure our children after school program, everything. So you are good advisory for us. But most important thing, you have a good heart, okay? And I think this is time to recognize our anchor and our, okay, resident that really serving our city for a long, long time and never, never been recognized, okay? And I think this is a good time for people to can see the face and the person they contribute to our great city. Thank you so much for your contribution. Hopefully, see, I didn't give you a piece of paper. Okay, I had to pay them for something more, it'd be fancier.
Okay.
Okay, so so you so you don't put in the toilet, okay, bathroom, put it in your living room, okay? But thank you so much for your service. Okay, thank you.
I want to tell you one thing. I moved here in 1961, and it was a lot different. And I've seen this city grow, and it's good. It's really, really good. That's it.
And. Let's give her a hand. Of course, okay, right now, 2025, almost 2026, it totally different than 1950, okay? So 1950, I don't think I can stand over here, okay? So so but the point is this, this is how the progress, how the the city continue to improve. And you can see the city become very vibrant and a lot of population. Currently, we have almost 120,000 population, okay? And when in the, we will talk about this with our historian, okay? But but the most important thing is the service for you is is outstanding. So I want to thank you again. Thank you so much. Okay, appreciate, thank you. And next one, another Miss West Covina, Sandra Taylor. Okay. Yeah, okay. Yeah, I know, I know. You look so good, okay? No wonder you are Miss West Covina. You look great, okay? Okay, I I think it's important thing, Sandra, same thing too. She served in the community service and also West Covina Women's Club, okay? And this is you serving a lot of different now profit organization, West Covina, and always represent us well. And then you're outstanding lady and continued, okay, to serve our city and for the volunteer, may basically non-pay, okay? And so like.
You're right.
I know, I know. I know, city owe you a lot of money, but but that's all donation from you, okay? So but 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 your outstanding service is becoming example for our, for example, our incoming mayor, okay, Leti Lopez, okay? It's a co-talk of the, we talk about the female power, okay? So owe you guy to continue to make sure our city continue to improve. You want to say something?
Yes, I was trying to, first of all, good evening. I was trying to remember when I was appointed as a commissioner. I know Steve Herford and Mike Tuohy appointed me, but nevertheless, I've served initially as a senior commission. And then from there, went to, what's the one, the BKK Commission? Yeah, yeah. Environmental and thank you, environmental. And then from there, I went to, I think, community services. Then from there, I went back to senior services. So I've been around. And I've enjoyed every minute, every minute. I've gotten to know so many of you. And as I was telling Gail, that most of the people that I knew previously have gone on to heaven, you know, they're no longer here. So but God bless, and I have enjoyed my tenure. I have made a lot of friends. We did a lot of improvements. And that's about all I have to say. I I fell, but other than that, you know, I'm good, I'm good. And I'm glad to be back and seeing the chamber looks so different, you know?
We haven't changed too much, it's just some decoration.
Well, some decoration is better than no decoration.
Exactly. We are good at true.
Oh, okay, all right, okay. So but other than that, that's it.
Okay. Since I know Sandra, okay, and I think more than 10 years, okay, a long time, okay? Even Mike Tuohy.
Twenty-five, near thirty.
Exactly. You've been serving for 30 years in our city and in different group, in different committee, and continue to serve for free, okay? So yes, okay, and that's what city like, okay, the freebie, okay? So so but anyway, but but the the spirit, okay, and the effort is the most important thing, that you have a lot passion to serve our city, the great city of West Covina. And because you, okay, because, okay, and Gail, and because a lot of our, okay, Glenn, and yeah, that's how our city become, okay? Of course, including myself, serving 10 years in the city council.
How long have you been here?
Too long, okay? So I know some people say, Tony, it's about time you can, okay? So I've been serving three term, okay, and it's 10 years already. So yes, I'm moving to next year's 11 years, serving in West Covina, Jesus Christ, yes. Okay, but I I enjoy every minute, okay, with all the people and all the lovely, okay, and personnel, and that is what keep me going and want to do good thing for the city. But more important thing is you, not about me. Okay, I think it's about you, outstanding lady, and this is a a mayor's distinguished, okay, volunteer service award, I want to, okay, present to you. I want to represent 120,000 population to say thank you so much, Sandra, for your outstanding service.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You pulled me down here, so now you don't have.
I feel like I'm just getting married with you, okay? Walk on the aisle, okay? Please have a seat. You you okay?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Thank you so much. Okay. And the number three, Miss West Covina, I think everybody know her, okay? And she is our historian, and she in all the event, and she's telling her the story about what West Covina story since 1923. You got ready for the outstanding, very young lady, okay, so young, okay? She look like my daughter right now, okay? She, okay, Colleen Wenaki. Colleen's, okay, and living in West Covina, you got ready? Since 1934. She just have her birthday, she just have her birthday a couple days ago, right?
Right.
Okay, you wanted me tell you their your age?
Sure.
You got ready? 96. 19, 1934, okay? And and the the place I I know her, okay, and is 2008, not in person. 2008, West Covina produced a history of West Covina. You guys can check on the YouTube, you just search, okay, history of West Covina. She is the star of that documentary. And she she looked the same like 2008, haven't changed a bit, even the same, even the same clothes, okay? So from 2008, okay? So so she was telling the story about West Covina history from 1923, and she came in 1934, and why she went through. Don't forget, West Covina was a farm land, okay? And we separate with Covina since 1923 because 700, including the first mayor, Mason, Mayor Mason, and he decide to, okay, say, we are, we're not going to stand about the sewer into this area, and they become separate, become West Covina city, right? Am I right? I learned, I learned, I learned from you, okay? I watch your show, okay? So 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 that that is such a great educational and well-made, okay, documentary about history of West Covina. You, I strongly recommend it, you guys, you have chance to watch. Very interesting and a lot of old photo, okay? And this is the history of West Covina. Without them, we don't have here today, okay? West Covina becomes such a great city, very important city, because the predecessor, okay, their effort and you guy, all this volunteer historian and continue to fight for our city. And I don't want to talk about you have a very famous family, but I let you speak, okay, right now? I know you, and by the way, she's a retired teacher too, okay, go ahead.
Right. Okay, just, I'm so honored. Thank you very much for this opportunity and for this award. My my grandfather came here in 1907 to West Covina, and I was, I grew up where Lazy Dog Restaurant is, that would have been my backyard. Lots of fun times. I I just love this city. My grandfather was one of the people who fought for cityhood and who went around and asked everyone to sign petitions for the city. And my dad was a teacher, a superintendent, principal and a superintendent here in the 40s. So I I just, I mean, this is my home, there is no other place I would rather live. It's it's just a wonderful city. And so thank you.
You deserve all the recognition because I I met you, and you always so polite, so kind, so happy, and always just smiling to anybody. And you will show about the story, okay? And I think this is important because we have to know the history so we can move on for the future. So we want to appreciate the predecessors of what you guy, the hard work, okay? And what we can be here today. No matter how the history up and down, okay, this and that, this is history. But people still have to appreciate what the people and the fighting for and they become who we are today. And we continue to fight the same thing, fight the same fight and try to improve our city, and that's why we're here. I I cannot compare with you. I I moved here about 40 years ago. So yeah, I know, it's kind of a long time too, okay? So we all love the city, but but you, the city, you started, okay, back in 1923, 19, your your grandparents, your fathers, your family. And so we want to thank you for your contribution, and we want to show appreciation for you, okay, as we, your successor, we want to continue to thank you about the effort to make our city great. Thank you so much, okay, appreciate.
Okay. Mayor Wu, I'd like to add a few words. I just wanted to say it was a pleasure serving with Gail and Sandra during my time in the Community Service Commission. And fun fact about Miss Corliss, her two sons graduated high school, and they both are professional, well, played professional baseball players. Her son Ron played and coached for the Dodgers and Angels. So that came from West Covina, and I thought everybody should know that. Thank you for raising boys from here, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other council member want to say something? Ali, you want to say something?
Yes.
Go ahead, Ali.
I'd like to to add to the words of the mayor and and Mayor Protem, and congratulating the three of you. I'm grateful to know the three of you and to spend time with you at the Historical Society and at the commission meetings and and to get to be in your presence and to learn not only of the history, but also to see how you continue to contribute now to the ongoing life of West Covina. Your legacy is is so far-reaching, the three of you. Your collective legacy really represents what happens when people really dedicate themselves to making a difference the way the three of you have. So heartiest congratulations.
And Councilwoman Diaz?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you to the three ladies that were presented with these awards. I want to thank you for all the hard work that you've done. And I just hope that we can have more people involved like this and have the love that you have for our city. And hopefully, we can bring the youth and and bring them in to be interested in in working together with you, and you can teach them so much. We can learn so much from each to each other. Thank you again.
Great, great job, okay? And Councilmember Gutierrez?
Yes, I think, you know, over a decade, you have given back to our community. And when people think of West Covina, they look at people like the three of you, who have the passion and the dedication to make West Covina continue to shine of the city it is today. So thank you for all you do to make West Covina beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. We have three magnificent human being helping our city. I want to thank you guys again for coming tonight, and I know it's a trouble for you over here, but it's outstanding for your service. We really appreciate the bottom of our heart, but thank you so much again. Okay, thank you. And we could move to manager report. Okay, if nobody against that, the manager to describe about anything going on about city?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This past Saturday, November 29th, we celebrated Small Business Saturday. We incredibly grateful to everyone who participated, the nine businesses who signed up for the event, and of course, all those in the community who chose to shop, shop small and shop local. Your support helps strengthen our local economy and keeps our neighborhoods vibrant and thriving. Participating businesses offered a variety of promotions, ranging from raffle drawings to BOGO deals to percentage discounts. Thank you for making this year's Small Business Saturday one to remember. We look forward to continuing to celebrate and support our local businesses all year long. On Wednesday, November 26th, the Cortez Park Community and Senior Center welcomed over 200 participants to celebrate Thanksgiving with a yummy turkey meal prepared by chefs Holly and Teresa. Guests gathered to enjoy entertainment by DJ Rudy, fun giveaways, and raffle prizes by Greater West Covina Medical Group, and a special pie donation from the San Gabriel Valley Senior Softball and Bun Street. The Cameron Community Center had a showing of Coco on Friday, November 21st. To kick off the event, attendees were able to decorate their own masks and caritas with stickers and color bookmark while enjoying some snacks and hot chocolate from the snack bar. Some of our active recruitment's underway. There are five active recruitments in the city. Our Public Works Director position is posted and be closing December 7th. So far, we've received 26 applications that are under screening. Our Fire Chief position is now closed. We currently have 23 applications that have been received, and the recruitment being managed by Trepevin Smith and Talent Solutions. Police Lateral, we have open, and that's open until filled. Assistant Finance Director Promotional has been posted, it will be closing next week. Status of applications will be screened upon submission. And Daycare Director Promotional is open this week as well, and applications will be screened upon submission. Upcoming events, let us know in West Covina, Tree Lighting Ceremony will be December 5th here at the City Hall Parking Lot, and Quanis Children's Christmas Parade, December 13th in historic Glindar Avenue in downtown West Covina. And that concludes my report for tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Look at, we have a lot of event coming up, and so everybody please attend all this event, okay? I think it's all great event. Tree lighting is one of the magnificent, just right over here, okay? And I know our incoming mayor is going to light the tree, okay? She say, what she, last year, she say she want a bigger tree. And I measure is a little bit bigger, okay? So I think it's a good congratulations, you got your wish come true. Okay, before I move to oral communication, and I walk in the elevator, I met with our new staff, okay? It's our HR manager, would you please come up, come down to introduce yourself?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Roderick Wells started with us this week as our new HR risk, HR manager and risk manager.
Yeah, coming to the podium, yes, and as a speaker, okay? And then Mike.
Testing.
Yes, go ahead. Yeah, yeah, so.
Hi, good morning, council. Nice to meet you all, Ali Rosario, Mayor Tony Wu, Leti Lopez Viado, and Brian Gutierrez. Looking forward to getting to meet you all, know you better, and working for the city of West Covina. I am the HR manager. I started last week on the 24th, so I'm just getting acclimated to everything that's going on with the city, meaning all the key, key players, key stakeholders. So again, looking forward to getting to know you all very well, and again, working for the city, bringing my expertise.
Thank you, Rogers. I welcome to West Covina.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Sorry, sorry, sorry to bring you to the spotlight, but hey, that's what West Covina is about, okay?
Yes, sir, I know. You indicated you were in film, so I know you're putting together a great script.
Exactly, but but welcome and wish you the best, and sometimes you have up and down, but sticking to it, okay? This is what life is about, okay? And do a great job for the city.
Outstanding.
Thank you. Could you put the the cover of the mic on top? Yes, I think it dropped on the floor. Yes, yeah, on the floor, yeah. Okay, thank you so much. See, you finished your first task, the cover on the mic, okay?
There we go.
Good job, okay? Thank you so much, Roger, okay? Appreciate, okay? And now we move to oral communication. I'm not going to read all this thing, okay? I'm not going to read all this paragraph, this, okay? I just want to share with everybody, you are welcome to come out to speak, address to the council. You have three minutes, okay? And just please be civilized, and first, how many speaker we have?
Mayor, we have eight speakers tonight.
Yeah, go ahead, okay? Let's have one by one.
We're going to start off with Sage Newman, followed by Josh Murray, then John Shoemaker.
Am I in the right place?
Yes, you're in the right place.
My name is Sage Newman. I am the CEO of Valley Light Center for Social Advancement. I have some real concerns, as a matter of fact, will you please hand these out to everyone there?
Over there, please.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
I have some real concerns, and they will be listed in that folder, is I felt the need to seek counsel based on what myself, as well as my board members, witnessed at the July meeting. Brian, am I looking at Brian?
Yes.
Okay, Brian, I have a question ask, sweetheart. You said that we were not going out to those bus shelters, and that you were getting a lot of complaints about our work. Would you mind telling me more about that? Because you made some very scathing remarks about my, let me finish, about my agency that has been serving this community for 30 years, and they were untrue. They were untrue. And your false, your false insinuations could have cost my agency supporters, grants, money, and you didn't even do your homework. You know nothing about us. And for that, I sought legal counsel. Will you, did you hand those out?
Yes, I do.
If we can have people support us, like Blanca Rubio, okay? Or the former Congresswoman Grace Napolitano, even Catherine Barger, that has supported our events and our efforts for our clients to find employment, to thank the the employers that have employed our clients. And you guys came up here in July, and you basically ruined that. And what really bothers me about it is that the complaints that you had, there is no documentation. Now, I don't know what the procedure is, but if your friends and your neighbors are telling you that the bus shelters are unkept, your next step should have been to report it to the city manager immediately, so that your city manager could contact us and we can fix the problem. You did not do that. As a matter of fact, in this packet, there are five years worth of emails, and not one of them, okay? I'm a finish. Not one of them had complaints.
I'm sorry.
No, look through your, your pack.
You have three minutes.
Do your homework.
Yep, thank you so much. And then we can have a meeting, okay, to, okay? After the meeting of council meeting, you are welcome to make appointment with each of city council or our city manager. We will address your concern. Thank you so much.
What I would like you to do is email me and tell me when you're going to put it on the agenda.
Yes, okay, yes. Thank you so much, appreciate. Next speaker, please.
Josh Murray. Josh Murray.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Josh Murray, and I am here on behalf of West Covina Library. Adults are invited to participate in our Sewing Basics Program on Wednesday, December 10th, from noon to 2:00 PM. Join us for a chance to learn a new skill. You will learn the basics such as cutting fabric, threading a sewing machine needle, and sewing in a straight line. Registration is limited and available on our website, la county library.org. Also on the same day, Wednesday, December 10th, from 4:00 to 5:00 PM, teens are invited to participate in the Teen Gingerbread House Program. Teens will have the opportunity to create their very own unique gingerbread houses out of graham crackers, frosting, and candy, and they will learn about architecture and design while enjoying our fun winter activity. And this program is for ages 12 to 17. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Josh. Next speaker, please.
John Shoemaker.
Couple items. One, the changes of classifications. I'm not quite sure what the rationale was or the need for it, especially since we have such a safe city. It seems like why would the jailer need to be promoted unless they're getting really busy? Maybe we're not the third safest city in the country. Also, as we look through things, oh, just to let you know, I did a quick search, and estimates have our city at about 107,000, not 120,000. The census only had it as 109, so people are actually leaving, not coming back. And there is one thing that I hope the city manager and the council would go along with, is there are things that get passed out here that become part of the official record, but we never see. You know, that, you know, staff has their reports, you know, which, which are clear and things like that. But then there will be council members who show up with 100 pages that they kind of pass out to who's ever here, but everybody who's watching on TV never gets to see them. They have no idea what's there. I was hoping that the, you know, when you prepare something like that, all of you, when you prepare something like that, that's presented, there should be a copy that's electronically given to the city manager or the city clerk, so they can upload it, so everybody who's watching can see it. And it becomes part of the record. Because when we're watching, when we're watching the, you know, videos, we don't know what, what it's, what's put on there. You know, we, we don't have a clue as to what's there. And also, with the city, you know, once in a while, I see you guys looking at your cell phones and things like that. That type of stuff should be banned. Because we don't know if you're talking to somebody, talking to each other, getting advice from a third party, or doing research that isn't part of the record or anything that's been presented. So we don't know where that information is coming from. You know, the one that comes to mind is back in 2019, it popped up with the Jeffrey Epstein files, that one of the members of Congress was texting Jeffrey Epstein. You know, so who else, you know, what other members of Congress are texting people, trying to get information? That's not part of the public record. And it just seems like, you know, especially, all of you talk about being open and wanting transparency to the public. Well, let's be transparent. That would be the thing, that you put your phones away, you put whatever you're using away, or it gets captured, so the public can see what you're doing. You know, and I understand, all of you have families and things like that, and there could be a concern.
Thank you, John. Okay, next speaker, please.
Next speaker, Brian Calderon Tabatabay, followed by Nikki, followed by Glenn Kennedy.
Good evening, council. Congratulations on the rotation tonight. I'm here first to speak to John. All of that is public record, so if you ever wanted to request the cell phone during the council meeting, you can. So just send that out. I'm guessing whatever's on that computer as well. I'm actually here tonight because there is an urgent matter. A West Covina resident, Hung Tom Hung, was abducted from his immigration hearing just last week. His family put out this letter and asked me to come and speak tonight. I shared it with you, and I want to uplift his story. Tom came to the United States when he was just six years old. This country is the only home he's ever truly known. Growing up as an Asian American kid, navigating a new world, he faced challenges like many of us do, and like many young people, his journey wasn't the smoothest. But the man he is today is an incredible and loving family man with immense dreams and aspirations. Today, Tom is a devoted, single father to two incredible daughters, including one. She's a senior. She suffers from autism, but she's thrived because of his love, patience, and unwavering dedication. She is struggling. Ever since her father was taken, he is currently in Adelanto. He also adopted his other daughter after the passing of his sister. Family's always been at the center of his life. He's a hard worker. He's a provider. Our community is better and was better with Tom in it, and Tom taking care of his family, and Tom working hard. And we are less safe today because November 20th, after his immigration check-in, he was abducted. He's currently, like I said, in Adelanto. We've contacted Congressman Gil Cisneros's office, Congressman Derek Tran's office. We've been writing letters, and my request and the request of the family is if the city council would be willing to write a letter in support of Tom, so he can be reunited with his family and go through the immigration process, as he had been doing for all these many decades. And again, that's the ask, and hopefully the council will go forward with that. Thank you. Congratulations tonight. Hopefully you enjoy yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Nikki.
Good evening, Mayor Wu, Mayor-elect Leti, council members, and community members. My name is Nikki Rodriguez Ahern, and I want to express what a profound honor it has been to witness the leadership of Mayor Tony Wu in the city of West Covina. Mayor Wu, your commitment to our schools, our families, and especially our young people has made a lasting impact on our community. As a patient care pathway educator, I have personally seen the way you show up, not just in title, but in action. You consistently attend our events, you celebrate our students' successes, and remind them that their accomplishments matter. This year, you helped me. Recently, you helped me secure sponsorship through CAAWC, a nonprofit organization, which made it possible for two of my young ladies to join a three-day missionary trip to Skid Row in partnership with One and All Church of West Covina. These were students, 14 years old, who would have never been able to afford this life-changing experience. Because of your support, their world became bigger, their faith became stronger, and their belief in their own potential grew in a way that cannot be measured. You didn't just open a door along with CAAWC, you altered the trajectory of their lives. For that, and for so much more, I want to say thank you. Tonight, I also want to congratulate Leti as she steps into the role of mayor. Leti, your leadership is deeply meaningful to so many of us. As a woman and a woman of color, you are paving the way for young girls throughout West Covina. Girls who need to see examples of strength, resilience, and representation at the highest levels of leadership. Your journey has not been easy. You have faced challenges, criticism, and obstacles, yet you have remained grounded, committed, and unwavering in your service to this community. Your accomplishments tonight is not just a personal milestone, it is a symbol of what is possible for the next generation. It shows our young women that their voice matters. Their presence matters, and their dreams are valid. To Mayor Wu, and Mayor-elect Lopez, and all of you on city council, thank you all for your leadership, your partnership with our schools, your dedication to the people of West Covina. It's an honor and privilege to stand here tonight and recognize the work that you have all done, and the work that is still to come. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you, Nikki. Okay, thank you so much. And next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Glenn Kennedy.
Glenn?
Good evening, city council. Congratulations, Leti. Thank you, Mr. Wu. First, I'm here representing the historical society. I'll let everybody here know that this Friday, we have our monthly meet and greet, 6:30, 3:38, Glindora Avenue. And I would hope everybody, the whole public's invited, and I hope you all attend. But what I really want to talk to you about, last meeting, you guys are going over the tree trimming contract and everything, and we were, we were talking about it, and the palm trees, the palm trees that sit along Lark Island and Orange and all through the city, we could deem those as historical landmarks. And with that comes grant money, and to maintain them. And then that way, this, that money does not have to come out of the general fund, is set aside. And I think it would be a phenomenal idea to save the city a little bit of money here. And I served with all three of these women, Gail Mason, Taylor, we both were on the community services for years, at least 15 years together. And, and also on the historical side, and with Clarice, I still sit side by side with her. What a wealth of knowledge. I'm going to give you a fact here, that if it wasn't for her grandfather, there probably would not have been a West Covina until the 1930s. It took 500 votes to start a city. He got 508. That's all we had was 508. He probably would have been the first mayor of this city, but unfortunately, he passed away a month before it became. And the next man up was Benjamin Franklin. I mean, Benjamin Maxson. I'm sorry about that. But I want to say, Clarice, it's been an absolute pleasure. And you're such an iconic woman in this city. I love you to death. Thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
Thank you, Glenn. Good job. Next speaker, please. Next speaker.
Doug Four.
Hi, guys. My name is Doug Four. I live in District Five, and I have businesses in District Three. Tonight, I'd like to thank the city's Economic Development Department for including the historic West Covina Business District and the members in the Small Business Saturday. Gerardo and Donnie assisted us in including and included us in the event. We look forward to working with them as their new city employees, and to make the downtown West Covina a great destination and a highlight in our city. Also, Leti, congratulations on tonight. We look forward to your leadership and working with you to make West Covina better. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Doug. Next speaker, please.
Lastly, we have Mario Sobalvaro.
Mario.
Good evening, everyone. City council, Leti, congratulations on rotation to mayorhood. Looking forward to working with all of you this coming year. Couple of things, I guess, to echo on. Yes, Historical Society will be having our meet and greet. It is a ethnic potluck. So lumpias, everybody loves lumpias. Throw that. See what else. Ridge Riders, working with Rotary and helping kind of revive that area. And as such, there's a group that has gotten together, it's not an official name, but they're kind of doing Ridge Riders New Generation, and I will be among them, riding in the Covina Christmas Parade this year. So maybe we can get some also interaction in the future coming this year, because the horses are there, and they want to come out and play. Lastly, let's see what we got here. Oh, and then, yeah.
Corliss.
Yeah, wealth of information. Yes, I've spent hours upon hours just being a sponge and absorbing all of the history that we have here. So congratulations, and look forward to many, many more, yeah, interesting gatherings where we discuss all the history. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Mario. Next speaker, please.
We have no more speakers tonight, Mayor Wu.
I enjoy all the speech. They are very positive. Nobody yelled at me tonight. Okay, I'm happy. So thank you so much. Okay, and city manager, you want to, okay, share some of light about some of the question over here?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sage Newman, thank you for your comments about Valley Light Industries and your company. We will facilitate a meeting for you to meet with any members of the council that you would like, and we can do that in my office at any time. I have your number. I will get in touch with you. Josh Murray, thank you for the information on the West Covina Library, as always. John Shoemaker, thank you for your comments and your comments about documents and transparency and part of the public record. I've already been working with members of the council, too. Whenever anything's passed out at a meeting, that I have a copy, and that we are able to add that to our website as part of the public record, so people can see what was passed out at a meeting. And to the best of our ability, we will be doing that. Brian Tabatabay, thank you for the information and story and kind words about one of our residents. We wish you the best on that one, wish everybody the best on those type situations. Nikki, thank you so much for your kind comments about Tony Wu, our outgoing mayor. I'll echo your sentiments. I don't think there's anybody that does more to promote youth and kid functions and to help kids in our city than Tony's done. I know the last six months being up here, I think at least every week, a couple times a week, I get a request to meet with somebody, help somebody attend something. So those comments ring very true to me. Glenn Kennedy, thank you for information about the Historical Society. Again, that's at 338 South Glindora Avenue. And also about the palm trees, I will have staff reach out to you about that and see if there is actually some grant money we can use to help offset some of our tree costs as we do trim the palm trees throughout our corridors. Doug Four, thank you for thanking our Economic Development Team, adding in Donnie and Gerardo to re-energize the economic developments. Been a big asset to the city, and we're looking forward to working with the Downtown Business District on Glindora Avenue, as well as all the corridors throughout the city with our, our businesses. Mario, thank you for the information about the Ridge Riders, the work I know you've been doing down there. I've seen you driving the tractor and doing all that good stuff. Be interesting to see the horses in the parade this year. I wasn't aware of that, so that's good news. For Corliss, congratulations on everything. And I just want to say that being a baseball guy, Ron and Gary, I watched throughout their pro career, and maybe people don't know their name, but definitely if you're a baseball guy, you know, Ron and Gary Renneke are big names in Los Angeles sports. So thank you. Tell them to say hello. Thanks. Autograph baseball would be nice. Thanks.
Back to city. We're back to city.
And that concludes my comments for tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, city manager. Any other comment from the council? Okay, I want to say one thing about our bus stop cleaning. And I met the crew a couple months ago, and I don't know, maybe five, four months ago, okay, and Citrus and Cortez, okay, and I met them, and at the same time, okay, and Berenca, okay, and Citrus, and also stop has been much cleaner. I have to say it, it's much better than before. I think what I see in my own eye, and the improvement is clearly visible. Okay, that is much better. And plus, I met your crew, they're hardworking people, a very dedicated crew. So, and I think we need to sit down with them, okay, any issue, we try to smooth, okay, and the city council try to work with you guys, and hopefully we can get, okay, and the contract. And but again, again, and I saw the improvement, okay, on the Berenca and Citra and other places. And visibly, you can see the trash has been cleaned and bussed up. And they used the power wash, and then when you use the two truck over there, a power wash and the bus stop, and I saw it myself in my eyes. So, so I even posted on my Facebook, okay, I say, great job, this and that. So it's not like we didn't see it, okay? We saw it, okay, we saw it, we saw it, okay, we will promote it, okay, just to let you know, okay, it's not everybody criticizing you, okay? Yeah, I understand. So please, okay, I just want to say good thing about you. Okay, yep, yep, please. Okay, thank you so much. But anyway, let's conclude about our oral communication. But thank you so much for the service. And then now we go to the consent calendar. Okay, consent calendar, one, two, three, if nobody want to, okay, you want to go ahead?
Just number one, real fast.
Okay, anybody want to put anything otherwise? Okay, that's two and three. Who want to move the motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, and so, uh,
Second.
So who's second? Okay, uh, we have, uh, okay, our councilman, Ali Cantos, move the motion, and our, our council member Gutierrez, second. Uh, roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilman Cantos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Wu?
Aye, and approve 5-0, and, uh, agenda number one, and, uh, Councilmember Gutierrez, go ahead.
Yes, if us, if, uh, our new development director could briefly, uh, tell the public what this is, and the great business is coming to our city pretty soon.
Thank you, uh, Mayor, Mayor Protem. Uh, the item that's before you is an amendment to the purchase and sale agreement. Um, what's, what's happening here is the city is selling a piece of land to a developer who's planning on building a Texas Roadhouse restaurant, right? And so we've already entered into the agreement, we've entered into escrow, and what we're doing here is we're amending, we're making three amendments to the purchase and sale agreement. First amendment is to the execution date, right? So we're changing the execution date to October 1st. The second and third amendment is to a 30-day extension period. So we've got two 30-day extension periods that we're going to include. And that's it. That's it.
Great. Thank you so much.
Did you have any other further questions?
Uh, no, I just want the public to know about the Texas Roadhouse coming to our community and what this, uh, new sale is about. And I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second? Second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, hesitate. Okay, this is a great thing. Texas Roadhouse coming to West Covina. We are excited with that juicy steak. Okay, and, uh, roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilman Cantos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez Viado?
Aye.
And Mayor Wu?
Aye, and approve 5-0. Welcome, Texas Roadhouse. Thank you so much. Okay, and we are going to have, we sold the land and, uh, we got about $3 million into our general, uh, fund, okay? And, uh, we are going to have a magnificent Texas Roadhouse right by the freeway in front of West Covina Plaza. It's going to become another landmark for the West Covina. Go to agenda number four. Who's going to present it?
I'll present.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mayor Wu.
Go ahead.
Item number four, reorganization of Mayor and Mayor Protem. Section 2-21 of the West Covina Municipal Code, excuse me, recently amended through the City Council's adoption of ordinance number 2523 on October 1st, 2024, outlines the order of the mayoral succession. Pursuant to section 2-21, during election years, the City Council is required to reorganize and install one of its members as mayor and one as Mayor Protem at the meeting, at which it declares the results of the general municipal election. Pursuant to section 2-21 at the City Council meeting, at which the City Council reorganizes, the current Mayor Protem succeeds to the position of mayor, and all other council members move up one position, such that the council member in the third position on the succession list moves into the Mayor Protem position. When there are two or more newly elected first-term council members, they are added to the succession list in order based on who received the highest percentage of votes in their district at the election. If an incumbent council member is reelected during a regular election year, that council member maintains their position on the succession list. Following the November 2024 election, the order of succession is as follows. Tony Wu, mayor. Letty Lopez Viado, Mayor Protem. Ali Cantos, council member. Rosario Diaz, council member. And Brian Gutierrez, council member. Do we have any opposition?
Um, no.
Being no opposi- hearing no opposition, excuse me, will now proceed with the swearing in of our new mayor.
And, and, uh, I think we have to do this. Okay, and I'm gonna nominate, okay, this procedure is, okay, to have our Mayor Protem, Letty Lopez, uh, become our new mayor. Anybody against this? If none, okay, congratulations.
Congratulations.
And, okay, time for you go down to the podium to go in.
Correct. I would now like to invite Mayor Protem Lopez Viado and Pastor Kelly Dupay.
Here we go. All right, I got it. All right. Well, congratulations, Mayor Letty Lopez Viado. Would you please repeat these words after me? I, Letty Lopez Viado.
I, Letty Lopez Viado.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Kelly. Um, I do have a speech, but I'll reserve that one. I'm back on the dais officially there. Um, but I'd like to also call on to the outgoing Mayor Wu, former, Mayor Wu. So as our tradition, we'd like to give you this plaque. And I know you've been mayor before, so now you have one for your work, one for your office, and then future one for anywhere else.
Maybe one to sell one.
And so I do have a few words again, but I'm gonna save it for there. Um, and, oh, one photo for outgoing. We also have a few offices that are here, um, that like to also present certificates for your outgoing. We have... So I'd like to invite, uh, Representative from Congressman Gil Cisneros' office to present a certificate for outgoing Mayor Wu.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations. Um, hi, everyone. My name is Kristian Salamat from the Office of Congressman Gil Cisneros. Um, and I'm here to present this certificate to outgoing Mayor Tony Wu. Um, while throughout your most recent mayoral term, you just advocated very well, um, on behalf of your constituency, especially the youth, um, always encouraging city pride and, um, just doing some great stuff, making West Covina, improving the lives of the residents, of the more than 100,000 residents of West Covina, the visitors, the businesses, um, uh, the school district, everything. Um, you really contributed so much, uh, as mayor, and you will continue in your council, um, as a council member. So congratulations, uh, to our new mayor, and thank you for your service, outgoing Mayor Wu.
Thank you, sir.
Forgot to mention, did you want to say anything for your outgoing mayorship, Mayor? Did you want to say anything?
Okay, uh, yes. Okay, and, uh, could you believe it? One year passed so fast. I just got sworn in yesterday, now I'm goodbye, okay? But I want to say this, this is my honor to be, okay, as a mayor of West Covina for this year, okay? And, uh, I want to thank all the staff, okay, and, uh, okay, and, uh, all my council colleague, and, uh, especially my resident, we worked together for this whole year. This is, uh, about 10 years I working in the West Covina as a City Council member. Okay, if you guys lived West Covina long enough, I think you remember in 2018, the city almost bankrupt, okay? And now you can see the West Covina is much better than the 2018. Not only we surplus, and this year, okay, we even hired 10 additional police officer, and we're going to build the fire station number one, we just approved, okay, and that beautiful design, that beautiful fire station is going to save a lot of life. And then we maybe even go to do the, okay, uh, station number three, and that one need a lot of attention, too. So we are going to do a lot of, okay, construction, improve our city. And most important, most important in this year, we have all our union contract. And 2020, I was work on the union contract. Cannot believe my eye, okay, or myself, is after these couple of years, again, we have to get another three-year contract. I want to thank, okay, the union, I could work the city and, uh, work on this contract and for another three years. And thank you so much. Work as a family, united together. That's how this is about. We have to united to continue to move our city. Now only let beside our city, the union, the contract, and the working together, united, and plus, with that, we have a lot of community event and make our resident very happy. We talk about what? Party, 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 remember? And they call me a party animal mayor. Okay, so, but the thing is this, we bring happiness to our resident. It's so important. That's why we're here for. We provide the service, we provide the unity, we provide the event, we provide the program, and that's how we're here for. And another thing is this, and everybody know, we have so many of business coming to West Covina. And then not only we have, uh, this year, we have, uh, uh, okay, um, Urban, Urban Cafe, okay, California Fish Grill, and, uh, okay, our, okay, uh, what's, okay, Heaven City, 36 restaurants over there. And now we're going to have, uh, Fogo de Chao, Texas Roadhouse, okay, and the Wallace Chicken, all coming in. We are on the map for all the business coming to West Covina. That is so important, because West Covina become, okay, a very important city, a big city, okay? No matter, people say we are 107, this and that, they don't know how to come. We are more than 120,000, I guarantee you, because you can see so many people on the street, very happy shopping around. Look at our West Covina Plaza, look how crowded we are. Look at West, uh, McIntyre Square. Look at SF in the south side, SF supermarket. Look at about our, okay, Tokyo Central. Look how busy, you cannot even find a parking space, right? You compare with all the surrounding cities, you see, West Covina is vibrant, happy, and what? Business friendly. So this is what this city is about. We are working together, okay, to improve. But this is just not about me. This is about what? What happened? It's about our new mayor. Okay, I want to say, the new mayor, this is her second time, too. Okay, so she, she know her job is. Okay, this job is about how to bring our city continue to, continue to improve. Okay, and this is important. This is how we're here for. We're here to improve our city. Okay, and, and that is how we continue to make sure our children has a program. We want to make sure, okay, our, okay, senior, okay, is, is taking care. And that's what this is about. So I, I want to thank the resident, but at the end, the only one person I want to thank the most is my wife. Without my wife, I won't be here. Okay, without my wife, okay, I, I cannot, okay, accomplish so much, not only achieve my American dream, okay, and become a successful businessman, and at the same time, for her support, okay, I can basically, okay, serve the city for this so-called a non-paying job, okay? And for people to attack and with all the drama, and you have to go through it, and that is how, okay, the city. But, but who care? You want to improve the city, somebody have come out to do it, okay? And I willing to do this because the support of my wife, okay, and that's what this about. So I want to thank everybody, okay? I can talk forever, but I'm so proud.
You can.
I'm so proud. I'm so proud about this city. This is a proud city. And this is such a great city, and we love to see. I live here almost 40 years. When I'm moving, I have no idea where is West Covina, okay? I just picked up the house, okay, and I'm, okay, I'm here for 40 years, okay? And I want, I cannot compare with Corliss, okay, and she's like here 90, 93 years, okay? But the point is this, no matter newcomer or old-timer, we are all here together. I want to thank the support for Sanjos and, uh, okay, Gail, okay, with your support, we can be here today. But thank you so much. I'm, I'm not leaving. I'm still here. I've just changed my title from mayor to councilman, okay? And that's what this is about. But thank you so much. Really appreciate.
We're letting him have his moment. Are we also... Hello, hello? We also have other presentations. We have a Representative, Jasmine, from the Senator Susan Rubio's office.
Hello, good evening all. My name is Jasmine. I'm with Senator Susan Rubio here in West Covina. And today, we're here to really, I want to congratulate Mr. Tony Wu, the outgoing mayor of the city of West Covina. Um, I have a certificate here for you. I just want to thank you. Um, I had the pleasure of working with you, uh, not too long, maybe only about six months, but you've always made me feel welcome, and you really pushed me to do better with, like, public speaking. So I thank you for that. And, um, I just want to welcome Mayor Protem, now, now the mayor of West Covina, Ms. Letty Lopez Viado. Um, so congratulations, and thank you for your service.
I, I, I remember when, when she, the first time she came to the senior center, and she reading script, I said, don't read the script. You're a representative. You have to come out, speak, like me. Don't need a script. You just, just feel like everybody know you. You don't care. You're not nervous, so you can do it, okay? Doing much better. Thank you so much. Yeah, appreciate. Thank you.
I would like to also invite Wendy, Representative from Assemblymember Blanca Rubio's office.
Thank you, Mayor Lopez Viado. And what a pleasure it is to recognize outgoing Mayor Tony Wu on behalf of State Assemblywoman Blanca Rubio. You know, Mayor, we want to thank you for your leadership and for serving countless residents and businesses here in the city during your term as mayor. And so we certainly know that you have a passion for leading this community and serving your, um, constituents. So we want to thank you for that and present you with this token of appreciation for, again, your hard work and your efforts. So you don't go unnoticed. So congratulations, and congratulations again, Mayor.
I'd like to also invite Brian Rodriguez from Police Officer Association, POA, to present a certificate.
Well, I'm not Brian, but I'm not as handsome as him. But on behalf of, uh, the West Covina Police Officers Association, we want to, uh, present this helmet to you as a...
Wow.
As a token of our appreciation, uh, we just want to say thank you for all the support that you've given us, um, throughout the years. And, uh, we can't thank you enough. I'll make sure to call you, um, next time we have, uh, a riot.
That means you gotta be working with them. Thank you. And last but not least, Guy Hamilton from West Covina Fire Department.
Uh, thank you very much, Mayor. Uh, Mr. Wu, I appreciate everything you've done for us. Um, we've had a, uh, difficult time in the last six months or so, working on our contract, but we, uh, but we've done a great job. You've, uh, always treated us right. Um, we've had to, uh, work for what we've gotten, but, uh, we've done a great job with, uh, the new city manager, um, and new finance director. We appreciate everybody's help, all the city council members. Um, uh, but I also want to say, we had, uh, several dozen people here that just ran off on calls. I apologize. We had a larger crew here, but they're out, uh, I apologize, we had a larger crew here, but they're out doing their job. I wanted to thank Mayor Wu for his 10 years of service, and we got you this plaque to commemorate that. If we can get all the other members up here, please, too, to take a picture with Mr. Wu, appreciate that. Step forward a little bit, they can get behind us on the sides and all over. Both sides, yeah.
All right, thank you, everyone, and we're going, thank you, thank you.
And I want to say really quick, okay, I want to thank the POA and the FFA, thank you so much, okay? I think the, the love, okay, the brotherhood and sisterhood, thank you so much, okay? I thank you so much for your service in our city to keep our city safe. Thank you so much, just give them a hand. And I'm so, I'm so glad, okay, we can get this MOU, get this contract smooth and everybody happy. I think nothing more important to continue to invest in our staff and make sure our city continue to move on, okay? And we have bright future, and we're going to stick together. Thank you so much.
All right, city staff, can you please change the rotation of movement, please? Because we have Rosario here, and, yeah, we need to move all the items. Can you kindly move the?
Mayor Lopez Viado, the plaques have been moved.
Okay, but Councilman Gutierrez does not want to move. Can you move his computer, please? Councilman Gutierrez, may you please move to your new seat? City attorney, is there anything?
Mayor, it's your, within your discretion on where everyone sits.
Okay. Sergeant at Arms, may you kindly assist Mr. Gutierrez move his items to his new location? We all reshifted. Please move his items.
It doesn't work, it does not work like that.
Here goes our first issue.
If you want to call for a closed session, recess, and then we could talk about it.
No, we are continuing on with this organization. There is nothing legal about this. Please, please move to your assigned seating. Councilwoman Rosario sits right there.
Point order, I think it's, okay, and the rotation, always the mayor decide who the seating, okay? And I think this is we have to enforce. And I think regarding ADA, okay, I think the, basically, the city managers and already changed the line to get ADA about what he want. So in that way, okay, city attorney, we already comply with.
Madam mayor, members of council, the city manager has addressed the situation already.
So the, the situation has been addressed, everything have been satisfied. So in that way, the seating should be rotated to what the current mayor want. Am I right?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. Staff has done everything they could to accommodate at this.
Do not talk about a disability in public. It's a protected information. If you want to talk about disability, you go in closed session.
Point of order.
This is mayor rotational, this has nothing to do with disability. Everybody has this opportunity. We've met the lighting changes. Matter of fact, you installed these lighting.
Just move your.
Just move your seat, and we can deal with the other issues afterwards. So if you can kindly move to your new seat, and in the next closed session meeting, we can discuss that. But for now, kindly, please move.
Yes, just come over, sit over here.
It's not that big of a deal. If you need the assistance to help you roll your chair over with you in it, by all means, we can request that. So please move because.
Disability discrimination against the law, and I urge you to stop talking about any reasonable accommodation.
City attorney, is there anything illegal about this?
Madam mayor, it's within your discretion on where everyone can.
Then it is my discretion.
The city manager has addressed.
He's referring to a question about disclosing confidential information under the Rehabilitation Act.
You are in the seat of Councilwoman Rosario Diaz. Please move.
If you want to call for recess, call for a recess, a closed session recess.
No, this is ridiculous.
Let's have the recess.
All right, recess is, and I.
Let's have a five minutes recess to settle this, okay? So hopefully, okay, our, okay, council member understand to kind of work together as a team, okay? And you want to call for a recess?
Unfortunately, the gavel was taken. There's no gavel here. This is it, recess.
For five minutes?
Five-minute recess.
Okay. Okay.
I'm so sorry, okay, thank you. All right. Meeting is back in session. Oh, I don't have a gavel. So, no.
I use my hand.
Unfortunately, for so many years, the gavel is conveniently missing now. So I know I've stated in the past how certain council members have access to the council chambers.
Don't make up allegations. Stop making up allegations.
Please, please, point of, yes.
Don't make false allegations.
Or else I'm going to have to recuse him.
You can't do that, sorry.
Yes, I can.
No, you can't. I'm an elected official.
Now I can actually reuse this. I'm going to ask you one last time, and if you will not, I will have Sergeant of Arms to remove you.
You can threaten me.
Thank you. Excuse me?
Stop your threats.
Sergeant of Arms, please remove Councilman Gutierrez.
Madam mayor.
Do we need to have a?
You can, you can take another recess.
Oh, I think.
Please don't interrupt the mayor and let her finish.
My understanding, point of order, my understanding is the mayor, okay, try to conduct the meeting. If one of the council member disrupt the meeting, then let the three of we can remove the council.
If you continually interrupt, then you cannot finish the meeting.
Okay, so if you heard that, no interruptions. Thank you. So I, I do apologize to our West Covina residents. Unfortunately, we do have one council member here that is not acting accordingly. As my, I had a speech, and unfortunately, we had this interruption. But anyways, I'm going to go ahead and continue. I just wanted to thank everybody for being here today. As I stepped into the role of mayor tonight, I just want to be, I want to begin by expressing my deepest gratitude. This moment isn't just about the new title. It represents the shared effort, trust, and collaboration that make our city stronger. So thank you Pastor Kelly for swearing me in. As many may not know, that he brings more than 30 years of ministry experience and serves as a police chaplain. He and I, he and I will be working together to provide additional support for the families in West Covina. So look forward to that happening with some workshops. As for, to my family, thank you for your unwavering support and the sacrifices you have made. I know there are times that you wonder whether all the challenges and issues I deal with are worth it. But your belief in me and your constant encouragement, including my children, yes, thank you, heart shape, she's there, empowers me to serve our community with purpose. Together, we're helping build a city where we want to live, work, shop, and play, creating a brighter future for generations to come. I want to recognize our outgoing mayor, Tony Wu. And this is what I want to say. Thank you for your leadership, dedication, and tireless service. I think we can all agree that you operate on a different kind of battery, one that never enters low power mode. You're everywhere, attending multiple events a day, responding to emails and calls at all hours, and still showing up the next morning with new ideas. Like the Energizer Bunny, you just keep going and going and going, pushing nonstop to improve our city. At every event, you always ask the community. Can, can the community guess what he always says at these events? He says, "Do you love West Covina?" And without fail, the crowd always answers loudly, "Yes, they do." So just like yesterday, today, tomorrow, and every day, I want everyone to know that I also truly love West Covina. See? I love West Covina. So, thank you, Tony, for reinforcing the love that we share. And to my fellow council members, thank you for your passion that you bring to every discussion. We don't always agree, and that's okay. My hope is that we can move forward together, leave behind these petty drama, and focus on the real work ahead of us. Let's commit to maintaining a high level of respect and decorum, not just in these chambers, but beyond them as well. To all our city staff, your professionalism and dedication are truly the backbone of everything we accomplish. You turn our ideas into action even when the pace is demanding, and you do it with expertise and grace, far more than the public ever sees. Thank you for keeping the city moving, and when the council piles on new task. I'm committed to supporting a work environment that promotes balance and wellness. As someone who also works full-time in parks, recreation, and community services, I understand, I understand the challenges you face. You also deserve a work-life balance too in a non-hostile work environment, and I'm here to advocate it while continuing to improve service for our residents of all ages throughout the community, including public safety. Now to our residents, thank you for your trust and for the privilege of serving you. I'm not just a District Two representative, I'm the mayor of the entire city of West Covina, and I will represent all of you with the highest level of standards so that you can continue to feel proud of our city. There will be policies and decisions you agree with and others you may not. That's part of the process, but we are in this together. As I've always said, when you come with complaints, blame, or criticism, please also come with an open mind with a solution to that problem, or at least a suggestion to help. So feel free to join us in lifting the city up. It takes all of us to do that. So in the seven years in office, I have listened, stayed open, and remained consistent in my efforts. I'm always looking for a win-win situation, and I will continue to do so with your help and input. I'm all about unity and community, so we are one city after all, and West Covina is our home. As we begin this next chapter, I'm reminded that progress in local government is never about one person. It's about partnership. It's about listening to one another, finding common ground, and working towards solutions that move our city forward. I'm optimistic about what lies ahead. I'm energized by the opportunities before us, and I am committed to serving with humility, collaboration, and a focus in improving the quality of life for every resident, and with a little humor to keep us all going. So I thank you for your support. I'm honored to serve as your new mayor, and I look forward to working together to build a stronger, healthier, and more connected community. I look forward to what we can accomplish together in this year ahead. So thank you, West Covina. Letting allow the council members to, if you have a few words.
Okay, I can go first, okay? And I want to thank, okay, our mayor, Leti Lopez Viado. I think you will be a great leader, okay? And extremely, unfortunately, okay, tonight, we have a disact of our, one of our council member, okay? I think we should work together, okay, be civilized, okay? And if you have any disagreement, okay, you can, we can later, okay, to work it out, but not just play out like this, okay? Especially, she just got sworn in, okay? And I think it's just mutual respect to each other, okay? No matter you have a disagreement, but let's work it out, okay? Most important thing is how this city is about, okay? We, we work it out with all the difference, okay? Civilize, okay, with the attitude, respect to each other, okay? Respect our new mayor, okay, and respect, okay, our, okay? And our this council chamber is represent, okay, the city, the taxpayer, the resident, and we proud to be here. We proud to be, okay, and here to make decision for their life, but at the same time, we treat each other with respect. And I want to say thank you so much for the mayor, Leti Lopez Viado, and still with the dignity, still with the attitude, and still, okay, and do the performance of the speech, and I will still continue want to serve this great city of West Covina. Even we have this kind of president, this kind of act, okay? But you still put your, okay, and emotion together, and, and we respect you. I think this is that people know, okay, you are a strong person to lead our city. I think nothing more important about that, okay? You are the strong person to be our leader. You, the qualified person, okay? Even you, the female, it's 50% of our population. The female is our leader too, okay? So, so with that, I want to say thank you so much. You willing to pick up, okay, this text on your shoulder, okay? Show people the grace, show people about your, your emotions, show people about your ability. I think this is most important thing, okay? Maybe they have some kind of drama and some kind of freak show over here, but it's not going to, okay, decrease about your ability, about your mayorship. I think more important thing, we know you will be a great mayor. Last time, 2021, you always prove it. And this time, you show you, you put yourself together with this kind of ridiculous situation, and you have that great speech. Okay, I want to say thank you, and we will follow your leadership. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilman Cantos?
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. I, I wanted to join with the former mayor in expressing my heartfelt congratulations for your ascendancy to this position. Anyone who serves in the seat of mayor, by virtue of the nature of the job, it is a combination of ceremony and statesmen and stateswoman ship, along with a spirit of love and caring and being the face of this entire community. You are the one as, as our leader who represents us all. And in spite of whatever agreements or disagreements that we have with policy, the fact is that whenever we all turn to those in positions of power to expect and demand the best, and whenever we do our part to contribute to helping them to do their jobs and as well as to making sure to build a strong team spirit, that is where we have the chance to come together. And you, in your role, you have served here for seven years. And during that time, you have seen all number of issues throughout your tenure. And now, as, as our mayor, I am appreciative for getting to serve at your side as your mayor pro tem. And as someone who is also dedicated to making a real and lasting difference in the lives of every single member of our community. And I join with, with our fellow council members in expressing my deepest heartfelt congratulations to you in Thanksgiving for your past service, but also with a positive vision and excitement for what you are to do during your tenure. Congratulations, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, and it is an honor to have you as my mayor pro tem. So I am so glad to call you mayor pro tem, Ole Cantos, and have you as my right hand. So thank you very much. Councilwoman Rosario Diaz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That was a fabulous speech, beautiful, loved it, very touching. And I just want to say that I, I'm very proud of you. I mean, you are able to hold it together despite the problems that we encounter. And I think you're going to be a fabulous mayor again. And I am very proud of you. And I know your family's proud of you, and I'm sure our, your constituents are proud of you. And I look forward to working with you alongside our mayor pro tem, Cantos. Mayor Wu, I just want to thank you for everything that you. Mayor Wu, I just want to thank you for everything that you've done for our city. I know that you are constantly busy, as Leti says, as Madam Mayor says, that you just never stop. And I think that while you're asleep, I think you're dreaming about the city. I really do. And I admire that. I think that's wonderful, and I think it's great that you have your wife, Helen, that supports you so much. And without her, obviously, you wouldn't be so successful. I agree. So I want to thank you again for your mayorship. You did great. Thank you for everything that you've done for us. You've worked really, really hard. I know that. And so now you get to be a council member. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. And as for, I know, Councilman Wu, thank you again for what you just said. As the residents can see, your true character has come out. So it just shows true character of someone based on what you see today. But I just want to also go to council request.
I have a comment, too. So I just want to say good evening, neighbors, colleagues, and congratulations to our new seated mayor. Tonight's not about titles, it's about trust. The people of West Covina didn't hire any of us to win arguments. They hired us to serve. I come to this diet with a simple promise to put people first, to tell the truth kindly but plainly, and to keep the public's business in the sunlight where it belongs. There was a comment recently about me visiting City Hall at all hours, as if I were roaming through departments and rummaging through desks. For the record and for our community watching at home, my access is the same as any council member. Council chambers, the community room, the council offices, and conference areas. Every document I review comes through proper lawful channels. Oversight is not mischief, it is a duty, and I will keep performing that duty with transparency and respect. As we begin this new chapter, I want to speak to the standard we owe to our residents. Ethics isn't a slogan we dust off during difficult moments. It is the daily work of self-discipline. It means we avoid even the appearance of favoritism. It means competitive, fair contracting. It means disclosures when personal relationships are financialized through color or vote. And it means accusing ourselves when private interests include private loans or other financial entanglements among public officials might reasonably cause the public to question our impartiality. That's not an accusation, it is a principle. It protects the city, it protects the council, and most importantly, it protects the public's trust. We can disagree, and we will, but disagreement is not disruption. Questions are not grandstanding. Audits are not attacks. They are to choose a good government. When we insist on clear scoring, food backup, and open competition, we are not slowing progress. We're preventing mistakes and saving money. The fastest rate to lose the people's confidence is to say, "Trust us," while keeping the paperwork out of view. I also want to address the way we speak to and about one another. West Covina's strength is its people, our frontline staff, our police and fire personnel, our small businesses and our families, our seniors and our youth. They deserve to see leaders who model courage and kindness at the same time. They deserve a council that listens more than it labels, that asks hard questions without personalizing them, and that can say, and we can all say that when we got something wrong, when the facts demand it. To our new mayor, you would define this year's tone. You would decide whether we meet scrutiny with openness or with defensiveness, whether we welcome audits or resist them, whether we lean on insiders or widen the circle to many qualified voices in our community. I am rooting for your success, because your success is West Covina's success. If you choose sunlight, you'll find me there when every step of the way. For my part, I will continue to file the requests, read the records, and bring forward what I find professionally, lawfully, and good faith. I would defend staff who'd follow rules and protect the public, and I would challenge the processes that cut corners or close doors. If anyone inside or outside this building tries to make public service a private benefit, I will call it out and seek correction. That is not politics, that is stewardship. Dr. King said, "The arc of a moral universe is long, but it bends towards justice." It doesn't bend by itself. It bends when ordinary people, neighbors, city workers, and council members choose fairness or favoritism and trut over convenience. It bends when we put people first. So here's my commitment tonight. I will measure every vote by one test. Does it serve the people of West Covina fairly and transparently? I will support competitive processes that give every qualified vendor a real chance. And, West Covina, let's choose the harder right over the easier wrong. Let's show our children that integrity isn't just a word on a wall. It's where we govern. Let's make this year where the facts lead, the public wins, and the only agenda it serves. And the only thing I'll say, the last thing I'll say is, I apologize to my council if you didn't get the HR email that gone out. Sometimes people with disabilities have accommodations. Growing up as a child who was physically and mentally abused as a child, and going to the foster care system while also having autism, Asperger's, is not easy. And when there is medical documentation to support the reasons why I'm requesting an accommodation, and the city's labor lawyers concur with that finding, all I ask is that you have a heart. I don't do this because I dislike anyone on this council. I have autism, and it's nothing I hide. I'm proud to be the first elected council member elected in the city of West Covina with autism and a Sanguibra Valley. But sometimes people with autism need accommodations, and all I ask is to please have a heart. Thank you.
Do you want anybody else to say?
I have a request.
Okay. Well, I want to make sure we have city council reports, AB 1234, conference and meeting reports, any? City council request?
Yep. Okay, I have a request. I want the city looking to the ADA abuse, okay. People using the ADA as excuses, not going to comply with the city. So this is my request, looking to it. The second thing, and, okay, our council member, Gutierrez, always talking about he is autistic and this and that, okay. So we really need to prove, showing he really have autism. So this is another request, showing he has, like, the issue. And the second one is regarding the ADA, okay, people using ADA as excuses, not going to comply with what the rule and the regulation is. So this is my Madam Mayor.
Let the record reflect that that's discriminatory. You're not HR. I want to be a point of order.
Let me contact, let me, I will, I will address you.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. The HR department does their job. They follow federal guidelines. You're asking for an act that's potentially discriminatory. And if you don't believe in your HR director, or your city manager, or your labor lawyers, then you could consult with them in closed session as the law requires.
And I have a motion?
I will second because we've never received anything prior. So if you...
Transparency, yeah.
Let's discuss about transparency, and we have the right to know whether, what ADA requirements are. I mean, we are here to make sure it is, that everybody has that equal treatment. But again, it needs to be equal treatment, and it's reasonable accommodation, not when something is being unreasonable. So I will second because we'd like to bring all this forward to see and know what exactly, all the information is out there for transparency reasons.
And I have a...
That's, we're good. We have a first and we have a second.
I want a point of order.
And we move the order.
A point of order, please.
This is not a discussion. This is...
Yes. Any clarification? Are you asking that this be put in closed session? Because this is a, this is a labor matter.
ADA in general is for any, it should be open for everyone, because if for future, if we have a future council member that has ADA issues, we should know so that we are able to accommodate those issues. We don't, we do not have only one person in this council with ADA.
Are you asking for ADA training?
We want, no, not training. We need to get all the information.
About who? And that's a closed session, Madam?
Madam, I understand what the request is. We're looking to preserve anyone's rights that has a disability. We're looking to inform council to make sure that the process is being followed and the council is informed.
Perfect. Thank you.
Summarize it properly?
Yes. Thank you. So we have a first, we second. Any agreements, disagreements? All right, then we'll move forward with that.
We all approve?
We all approved.
Nobody against.
Okay. I also wanted to put in a request that, for all agenda, for all agenda, future agenda, that we have the city manager's report prior to the public comments.
I second.
Any objections? Okay, that goes forward. City council comments?
Nope.
Nope. I just want to let everybody know, thank you again. And you always get a show with West Covina. But there is cake upstairs. There's snacks. Feel free. And thank you again, and have a good evening. I move to adjourn. No gavel.
Okay, second.